I'd like to call to order the October 10th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Acting Secretary De Seco, would you read the call of role, please?
Sure. Commissioner Dallow?
Here.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner Casale, absent. Chairman Moffett?
President.
Commissioner Oppone?
Here.
Commissioner Wozniak?
Here.
Commissioner Moore, absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you.
I'm here too, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. For the record, thank you.
Well, she tried. So I have to give her credit for that. First item is approval of the agenda. There are no corrections.
Go move.
Support.
By Turner, support by Oppone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the September 26th, 2016.
So move.
Support.
Move by Turner, support by De Seco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This evening, we have three site plans to review. The first, rezoning petition, re-review, number 07-15. Mr. Nguyen, why don't you start us off with kind of an updated reminder of how we got to this point and what we'll be doing this evening.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This site was before the Planning Commission multiple times. Most recently, it was before you last October for a rezoning hearing, and it was tabled at that time with the suggestion that all the parties get together and see if we could find some common ground. And we used that time productively to meet with the applicant's attorney, their engineer, the homeowners association to the north, and their legal counsel to explore some options, again, in the hope of finding that common ground. We had multiple meetings here at the township where everybody worked in good faith, and I think we found a solution, a design solution, to the issues that we faced originally. So, I'm kind of looking at this first on a macro level. If you look at this site in relationship to the master plan, it's planned for suburban, moderate-density development in the master plan, and that's a single-family planning category with a recommended density of about 3.5 units per acre. The master plan also recognizes that there is a need for different forms of housing that may go beyond just single-family homes that address current market demands and anticipated market demands, but that the new housing should be introduced in an area that doesn't adversely impact surrounding neighborhoods. And the issues that surrounded this development were product type and density, and what this has kind of evolved to is from single-family to duplex and office, which generally are very effective transitions, and there's multiple locations in the township where duplex development and office development have been introduced next to single-family subdivisions very effectively. So, the site issues were, maybe if we can have the first slide, Ed, just to show you just the overall development. Mr. Ruggeri will go over this in more detail, but just as a reference, the first thing we wanted to do was to introduce the uses and arrange the uses to minimize the impact on the Pheasant Run subdivision to the north. There's a 50-foot drain easement that separates this site from the subdivision, and we wanted to use that effectively to increase the buffering and separation. So, what was, what we suggested is shifting the development, the single-family development, I'm sorry, the duplex development closer to 21 Mile Road and maximizing the distance between the home, the duplexes, and the homes to the north. We also suggested rearranging the duplex units. The first plan you may recall, maybe Mr. Ruggeri would show this later, the duplex units backed up to the north property line, so you effectively had almost a solid wall facing the residents to the north, and there wasn't actually enough room for screening plus patios because the drainage had been gotten away. So, we suggested a perpendicular arrangement, so it's the side wall of the homes, not the back wall of the homes. So, that provides more privacy and actually more room for open space. Also positioned the office to minimize the impact on the neighbors as well. And then there's a green belt the entire length of the site. Could you put the other slide up, please, Ed? And you can see along the north property line, there's a substantial green belt and berm along there. So, this is being proposed as a conditional rezoning where the site plan would actually be linked together with the rezoning, so what you approve is what you're getting. And you can see now that originally, I think, it was R6 and O2, and based on the density, we can actually go down to an R3, which is a much lower density, and symbolically, I think it looks a lot better on the map than an R6. The, and the reduction in density now is, I think, 4.5 units per acre, so we're about a unit off, but I don't think in terms of the overall master plan, that's a major issue. The question versus O1 versus O2 is, the reason we objected to the O2 was O2 has a two-story opportunity. We didn't want to see two stories, two occupied floors next to that subdivision. I think that would be an invasion of their privacy. I think the O2, the preference for O2 was that it offered an opportunity for a bank, and we don't feel a bank would be an adverse use here, and if they ever come, find a tenant that would want to move there, they'd have to come back with a modification to the plan, which I think could be acceptable, because banks typically make pretty good neighbors too. So, we did a full site plan review, and you can see we have a lot of comments, and the engineer does too. Most of those comments, I think, are easily, easily fixed. The only really substantial issue is the parking calculations for the office building suggest that they're not going to get that big a unit there. They might have to reduce it. Plus, if you look at the elevations for the building, doesn't look like a, it looks like a retail building, not an office building, so they're going to have to change that elevation to make it look more appropriate like a professional office building and not like a strip center. We do need a lighting plan, some berm details. They will need a couple of variances. Moving the building to the south would necessitate a trip to the Board of Appeals. But having said all of that, I think this plan's in a position where I would comfortably recommend favorable consideration to the Township Board, subject to obviously making, should we get all those details corrected? So, again, this was a lot of negotiations, and it was a very complex process, but one, at the end of the day, I'm really glad we invested the time in because working with the association, their legal counsel, and Mr. Ruggeri and his design professionals was a very satisfying process. Mr. Chairman, I think everybody benefited from it. Thank you.
Well, I agree with you. This is, this is a marked improvement from where we began this process. Let me ask you on the, on the office, because I know we talked earlier today and shared some of the same concerns. It looks like a strip center, and if you think it's over, it's, the building is likely too large, I mean, are those adjustments significant enough or are not so significant that we can act today and have it worked out?
I think they are. I mean, I'd want them to come back and show you that. They still have to go to the board yet, and I think we'd like to see what that looks like before they go to the board, but I, you know, I guess we can, I, we still need to work through that, or they could say we could leave that and come back, and we could approve part of this and come back for the other part later. I guess it's up to, Mr. Ruggeri, I have to talk to their clients, what their intent is. If they're intending to do the duplexes first, I think they're ready to go with that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that, that part of this seems farther along.
Right.
I mean, there's still some, I think, significant issues with that office building.
Yeah, the, the retail is, I mean, the residential is, is really ready to go, except for some variances. I don't think it would take them much to be able to come back with a revised plan. They were looking at a footprint and a different elevation.
Well, I mean, this has been a long process, too, so, I mean, I hate to hold up anyone but, but especially since there's been significant movement, I think, towards the right direction. But, all right, we'll tell you what. At this point, Mr. Ruggeri, why don't you come up and get your name and address and...
Good evening, everyone. Phil Ruggeri, 43231, Shaner, Sterling Heights. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. As Mr. Nguyen has outlined, the parameters of our last meeting, this has been a long process, and I'm very pleased to know that we've had a significant amount of successful meetings with the homeowners, and through the assistance of their legal counsel, Karen Birdy, and with Glenn's participation. Glenn acted as our mediator, more or less, and we had several meetings here at the township to digest the concerns of the neighbors and those of the petitioner, and I think the plan speaks volumes from where we have come from, from the, from a year ago. Most important thing is that we came to a resolution to minimize the zoning from R6 to R3 for the multiple and from O2 to O1. The main concern was that not to have a two-story building, but if you look at the O1 and the O2 classifications, they're very, very similar uses. In fact, O2 encompasses everything under the O1 zoning, and there's just a few other matters that can be allowed under the O2, and we've all acquiesced that you can utilize the O2 classification, but it's going to stay O1, but you can never use a two-story building on that, on that particular site. If you look at the original plan, you can see the concerns of the neighbors. We had the back of the building where you would have decks, more or less, but that would be impacting the...
Can you, hang on one quick second. Can we get that slide up on the screen?
Do you want me to put it on here?
Yeah. Well, next one. There we go.
You can see for the duplexes to the north, we had a buffering, but the actual, there are three buildings that had the back of the building facing towards the residents, and that appeared to be too much of an encroachment for the privacy of the residents. So, throughout our meetings, we tried to carve ways in which to get the maximum density that our client was trying to achieve, which was 22. That's what he needed to have, and based upon that, without losing buildings, we reconfigured it. And if you could go to the site plan, once again, you'll see that we ended up with a cul-de-sac, which is good for emergency purposes and so on, and all you have is the, the two end units, you have the side view, and then you have a substantial berming along the drain that traverses to the north, so you're going to have vegetation and a berm that allow for complete isolation of the property to the, to the north. And I think the residents were very, oh, yeah, this is the, this is the old one. You can see that this old plan needed a lot of work, and we did make that determination. Here's the new plan. You can see how that cul-de-sac works quite nicely for emergency vehicles as well as the occupants of that site. And if you can turn to the next site, please, shows you, this is the landscape plan, which shows you significant vegetation, which is all spelled out. It gives us that berming effect and isolation from the residents to the north as well as to the east. And as far as the O1 designation for the office building, if you can flip to the next one, now, that's just the concept plan. Gives you an overview of how green it'll look once the complex is designed, but there's one more, if you could flip to it. There we go. Thank you. It kind of cuts off half of the duplex units, but you can see how much open space, greenery, and the parking, how it's been configured, so it, again, it gives the least amount of contact or impact to the property to the north, and it encapsulates that, that office to stay by itself and not, and not infringe on the residents again. So, we have a dual effect. We've got both the duplexes and the office giving the least amount of impact to the residents to the north and to the east, and it fits in quite nicely as a transitional zoning between that the residential to the east and north, you have multiple, and then you have office. Obviously, at one time, I believe this was all zoned commercial, so this ends up being a really good component to have for the residents, because I think commercial would have been a much more impactful-type development here, and this, this really aids, I think, the overall development. And I think we've, we've got the agreement by the residents through legal counsel and the representatives from the homeowners association that they are in total agreement with this plan. I believe they took a vote, and perhaps Karen can put that on the record. But I do want to emphasize and thank again all the residents for their participation. It just shows you that when you get people together, you know, good things can happen, and Karen was very instrumental in kind of coordinating all that, because you have a lot of residences she has to deal with, and then she has to deal with me, and that can be tough sometimes. But Glenn himself, he did a marvelous job on getting all the parties to focus on the issues and to make the appropriate changes that this project would require, and I want to thank Glenn for his help on that. Without his help, I don't think we would be able to come to this resolution. So, other than that, if there's any questions, we're here, I'm here to answer, and I'd like to have maybe Karen indicate...
I can still run the meeting. No worries.
[laughing].
This isn't a public hearing. You know, we, we had the public hearing and had closed that, but I do, recognizing that the association has been represented by council, I think it's germane to this conversation for your input.
Good evening. Karen Birdy, on behalf of Pheasant Run subdivision. I think Mr. Nguyen really did give a nice background and lay out exactly what the concerns are. His notes, that he was kind enough to share, are very important to us. We believe that these are incorporated into the agreement and are important to us. Yes, this was zoned R1B, and now we are agreeing to O1 and R3. It's a true compromise, and the important parts of this plan to us are obviously the separation between their uses and our residents. So, if we need variances, we would prefer that they be at the street as opposed to in the back. We're really looking to preserve that which we're agreeing to tonight as far as the setback to our residences. Besides that, we're going to be in support of any variances as long as those don't change, because those are exactly what I presented to the homeowners at their annual meeting, and I was really quite impressed with these homeowners. They paid attention, they asked good questions. We explained where we came from, how we got there, and what our goals were, and they voted unanimously to be in support of this. So, it does go to show that residents can be reasonable and do want to make solutions in their neighborhood. I do want to also point out that I hope you guys all know what a gem you have in Mr. Nguyen. He really, really worked with us very nicely. One of the things I learned from him, this is just a side note...
Why don't you save this for the next meeting, because if we do approve this?
[laughing].
They're the ones that actually do something for him.
Okay.
Not that any of us would object. I say give him more money.
It's budget time.
Side note, I learned something from Mr. Nguyen. Probably not real important to this meeting, but I do want to share it. Mr. Nguyen was so open to different ideas, and he would say, "Well, let's try that. Well, let's look at that." And it was funny, because some of the things that we thought we wanted, we actually didn't. And it was really nice, the process that Mr. Nguyen had, the way that he approached it and said, "Let's look at it. Let's try it. Let's see what it looks like. Now, let's analyze it." So, he's an excellent planner. You guys are fortunate to have him. We are in support of this plan as long as we can keep the conditions here. The one thing I did hear that had me a little troubled is, this is O1. We expect it to be O1 and the uses to be O1, not O2 uses, however, the bank. We did agree to that, because a bank is, is a nice neighbor. So, if in the future, Mr. Vitale gets a tenant that is a bank, we are open to that, subject to looking at the plan, obviously.
So, Mr. Nguyen, if they propose a use that isn't O1, a bank, he still, they would have to come back and amend this.
Absolutely, and I'm thinking the best way to handle this, maybe Bob can weigh in if I'm overstepping my bounds, but that we write, I'm more comfortable with the way O1 looks on the map and R3, but we could write the agreement such that opened the door to the bank opportunity if it ever came back. That, I think, is what Mrs. Birdy's referring to, that we allow, consider the bank. They'd have to come back for a revised site plan, though.
It'll be O1 and a bank.
O1 with a bank.
O1 with a possibility of a bank.
Right, subject to revised site plan. I think that opens up the possibilities and gives them the flexibility.
Bob, what are your thoughts?
We can probably work that out. This is a conditional rezoning contractual, so we can work something out.
The only reason that I believe that the neighbors would be opposed, if you will, to a bank is if we start putting drive-throughs next to them, et cetera. That green space, oh, it's on that slide. The green space that you have to the north of the O use is intentional. It's so that we don't have headlights parking, there's no parking on the north side of the property with the O1 use, and we did that on purpose. So, that's something that we're really looking to continue, and if we can put, if Mr. Vitale can put a bank in there without disrupting those setbacks, I don't think the neighbors are going to have any problem. But again, those setbacks are what's important to us. Any variances or changes along those lines, we're asking that the variances be at the expense out at the road, not at, at the back by the neighbors.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I may, typically, a banks are smaller than, like, half the size of this building would be, so I think the bank would fit in there a little more comfortably, actually. I just like the way, I, the compromise, I think, in terms of technicality would be zone at O1, but amend the agreement to allow that other use.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. To the board, does anyone have any questions from the petitioner and his friend?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Not a question as much as a comment. Mr. Ruggeri, I really think what you, you and your applicant, your client did on this property is great for a lot of reasons. I was not a big fan of this last time we came in because of the density issue in the O2. What I really liked, and I think what's telling, is how you took a plan that was universally opposed and turned it into one that was overwhelmingly, if not unanimously, supported. And you're right, working with Mrs. Birdy and Mr. Nguyen, our diamond in the rough over here, I think is a great, a great way to show how you do good planning. You came before us a year ago, you listened to what we had to say, you heeded our advice, you went back, you worked with the residents in Pheasant Run, and you came up with a plan that I think is a great mix and a great blend for the area. So, I want to go on record as thanking you, and this is the second time in two meetings we've had a developer come back, reduce density, and come back with a plan that is a better fit than the original one. So, I want to thank you for being part of that. I appreciate it.
Mr. Bernardi.
Mr. Ruggeri, I want to thank you on this, because I, I think it's a great improvement from, from where it was. I had my doubts before. I like what I see. I'd just like to make sure that the berm, that's to the north of the residence, is adequate for them. I know it will be. I had a couple of questions on the development itself, on the duplexes. I notice they have one-bedroom, so I was curious what, what attraction you're looking for as far as bringing people in with the one-bedroom units, and then also kind of where the price point on these units might be.
Thank you. They're, they're not, they're two-bedroom.
Are they two?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're significantly in size as well. We're looking at around 2,000 square feet per side on the duplex, so those buildings are north of 2,000, 4,000 square feet, so there's plenty of space, plenty of room. It'll attract, whether it's the elderly or the upcoming professionals or somewhere in between. The price will be definitely in a market range, significantly north of 275, probably pushing towards 300, I would think, just judging by the size and using the square footage. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dallow.
To Mr. Ruggeri also, going through all these hurdles, do we have a schedule to start and finish this project soon?
I know Mr. Vitale is very, very anxious. He probably called me every other week wanting to know what's going on, and we've been at this for about a year. So, he was hoping to get in, in the ground this, this fall. He'll, as soon as he can get it through, you know, the engineering, et cetera, and get permits, he'll start. You can rest assured, he'll, he'll be going at it by spring if you can't do it during the winter time.
Thank you.
Sure.
They spoke about the development, how it might take place, the retail, the professional as opposed to the condo sites, as far as what might come first, what the changes with the...
All depends, I would venture to say that he'll do the condos right away, and as far as that building, we just came to find out about the, the retail-looking versus office, but that can be cosmetically fixed. I think the, I talked to the architect today, and rather than hurrying and bringing a new plan in today, he said that'll be something we'll fix before it goes before the Township Board, and they'll certainly have the acquiescence of the homeowners and Karen and Glenn. We'll have everybody take a look at it, make sure they're comfortable, because I didn't realize that that building came off in that projection of a retail outlet. That certainly wasn't the intention. That's really an architect's province. But other than that, if he's ready to go, myself, I'd do everything at once. You know, you've got all the underground out there, and it's probably a little less expensive to do everything at one time, but I, you know, I don't have that call. If he does have a bank, then we've got to come back for that portion of it and have the approval before planning and then, and also the Board of Trustees. So, I know he's going to go right away on the, on the duplexes. And, and if he's going to stay with the office, then emails will do it at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the, the office, you know, they need to make some adjustment to that, and, and I'd like to have that, make sure it's finalized before it goes to the board. I think it's better the same time than I would bring it back and show the Planning Commission at the same time. But I don't want to lose our momentum a little bit, because we have some, and, you know, this is, this is one of those rare processes that worked really well. I'd like to keep that going, but I, I don't, I wouldn't sign off anything administratively without sharing with the Planning Commission.
And we'll have that planned within a week, no question, if not sooner.
You could technically approve it this way, aside from the parking issue, but I don't want to give the appearance that this is a strip center, and 10 years from now, somebody starts renting out space to the wrong use that, that, you know, it, design means something.
It looked very similar to a lot of things that come before.
Yeah, on the record...
The four different units, you know, it looked...
No, it's not going to, I, I don't think that was the intention at all.
I'm sure it wasn't.
I think he was just trying to give it a design, but not, not to make it into a retail outlet. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wozniak.
For Mr. Ruggeri again, sorry, sir. Just so there's a clarification, if we are indeed talking bank going forward, there may be requirements from a bank that would prohibit it from going in here. The first would be the drive-through. My understanding that the residents were adamantly against a drive-through, or with a bank incorporated, it'd be all right?
I would, I would think that the residents would have no objection or Karen can...
We're not against a drive-through, just not any closer than what it already is. The setbacks that we've already predetermined, we need honor. So, if they can somehow put a drive-through in by honoring those setbacks, then we're fine with that.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a problem.
That should be fine, yeah. I would think we might even be able to move the building further closer to Shaner.
Yes, I think you can. No problem. It'll be half the size of this building.
Yeah, and then the height requirement in O1 might prohibit a bank looking at it favorably. So, I talked with Mr. Nguyen earlier today, and we could probably consider doing a variance off the O1 to give you some extra height, but not a second floor. So, it'd be nice to put all that together.
And have that residential character to it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I may, we've seen a couple of banks came in where they had a height issue, but it was for like an entrance structure that, you know, something that was design-oriented, that wasn't occupiable space, but they just wanted that different look. And I, when Mr. Wozniak mentioned, I think, you know, we're going to, you don't want to preclude good design here that's not going to impact somebody, but again, that would be a variance item, and the neighbors would know about it. We do it all within the proper context, but I'm glad Mr. Wozniak raised that. It's a good point.
Yeah, the single-family, or the single-story structure sometimes looks very mundane, and so I'd rather have it looking dynamic, and if we got to give you a couple of feet to do it, let's do it.
I, I agree, as long as everybody's in agreement on that, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a second floor.
No, 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 not a, just, just for cosmetic purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
This isn't a public hearing, but if someone doesn't feel that their wishes were represented by council that lives in that neighborhood, I'll let you come up for a few minutes. I don't see anyone nodding or standing up, so I'm going to assume that's going to be no. All right, thank you. To the board, is there anyone willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of rezoning petition number 07-15 for Geralamo Vitale, parcel number 23-07-25-300-039 to be rezoned from R1B, single-family residential to O1 professional office, and parcel number 23-07-25-300-041 to be rezoned from R1B, one-family residential to R3, multiple-family low-rise for the following reasons. Both the R3 and O1 districts provide compatible and appropriate transitions to the abutting single-family development to the north. The proposed development pattern is consistent with accepted planning and zoning practices. The rezoning will provide new housing opportunities that accommodate needs of residents of all stages of life. The site plan for this project will not have a negative impact on any adjoining development. A revised site plan is required, fully complying with all of the proposed department comments, and appropriate variances from the zoning Board of Appeals are required.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion in support. On the motion... On the motion, with the, which, Mr. Nguyen, who would get noticed on the ZBA?
Everybody, just like a normal ZBA.
All right, so to the question, on any variance that comes before the ZBA, you'll have the opportunity to, to kind of restate or make sure that, that, that body...
I'll make sure.
All right, okay, very good, thank you. With that, are there any other questions on the motion? I'm sorry, who made the, who supported that? Was that Mr. Oppone? Yeah, I thought so. I'll call the roll, Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Oppone.
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak.
Yes.
Mr. Dalu.
Yes.
Mrs. DeCicco.
Yes.
Mr. Bernardi.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Okay, next item is Site Plan 16-34, special land use number 10, and this is a public hearing, so I will ask the acting secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Ronald A. Dubell Massage TJR Spa, 8650 15 Mile Road, Apartment F, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48312. Proposed use: massage therapy. Location: 45917 Hayes Road, northwest corner of Lakeside Boulevard and Hayes Road. Site Plan 16-34, special land use 10. CIDL number: 23-07-36-426-003. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, October 10, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Acts 112, 2006 as amendment. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Morris Secretary, published September 25, 2016. Eighty-nine property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on September 23, 2016.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Could you explain uses under the present zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate?
Currently, it's a commercial zone, and this request tonight for this type of use is permitted as an accessory use, but the ordinance has now been changed that this type of use as a principal use can be granted as a special land use in any office or commercial district, so it's a proper request.
Okay, great. Anyone have any questions for the attorney? Hearing none. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for their request. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open up the floor to the, to the public for any questions or comments or concerns that they may have, and then allow the petitioner to answer those. At this point, is the, I see the petitioner waving. If you could come up, and I would need both your names and addresses, please, and then make sure you sign into.
Thank you so much. I'm Ron Dubell, Ronald Dubell, 8650 15 Mile Road. I am the petitioner. This is Larry, my...
I'm Larry Howard, Howard Realty Group. I represent the landlord, B&amp;R Group, 42524 Hayes, Clinton Township, Michigan, 48038.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not a professional speaker like the attorneys before me. I'm just an honest businessman. We have a location in Sterling Heights now under the name TJ Spa, Massage TJ Spa. There's a slight variance in the name here, but we do have the DBA for it. There's reasons for that, inside, internal reasons for that, nothing major. We're very legitimate, honest business. We're therapeutic massage. We're not sensual massage. We're not those things that, that go along with the word massage. We're very legitimate. Everybody that works with us has been thoroughly vetted by the state of Michigan in order to get their licenses, then again, by the city of Sterling Heights, and I assume, since we filled out all the proper paperwork here, I assume you probably did too. They're all licensed. They know what they're doing. They're Chinese. One of them is my wife. Okay, they're, they are not U.S. citizens, but they're here legally, have social security numbers, pay taxes. What we do is body massage, not the word full-body massage. We do body massage, we do a foot massage, reflexology, Chinese reflexology, we do hot stones, we do Chinese cupping, all very legitimate, all very above board, all very legal. I don't really know what else to tell you, gentlemen, you ladies. We are who we are. Again, we're very honest, legitimate business people.
How long's your business been in Sterling Heights?
In, since, we, we opened July 5.
Okay, so, oh, July 5th of this year.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You're certainly welcome to check with Sterling Heights. We're certainly in no, no way ever, ever any complaints or any problems there. We actually have, the side note, we have a couple of city officials, without naming them, that are regular customers.
Okay, all right.
If I may, I represent B&amp;R Group. We own this shopping center. We also own the one that's on the other side of Lakeside Boulevard, so this one is anchored by Buddy's. The one on the other side is anchored by Sherwood Brewery. We've added a lot of tenants and businesses to these centers over the last few years. As people's tastes go more towards service and less retail, as more online shopping, as developers, we're dependent on services, therapeutic, doctors' offices, many other type professionals are entering these properties. I myself manage over a million square feet of space, have 180 commercial tenants. We have these uses in multiple communities in southeastern Michigan, and we're finding them to be great tenants, very mainstream, and a part of a lot of people's prescriptions for stress and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions for petitioner, Mr. Dalu?
Mr. Chairman, how big is the place that you have presently in Sterling Heights?
About 1,300 square feet.
When you say the employees are licensed, what kind of license does it require?
Michigan, state of Michigan requires a, a licensed medical, or a massage techno, LMT, Licensed Massage Therapist. They go through a, quite a vetting just to get that. You need the training, you need the schooling, you need the background checks, you need the fingerprinting. We went through all that. And all, they're all female. We have no male, no male nurses at this time. We hope to add one. But everybody that comes in is, again, totally licensed by the state of Michigan.
Your, your clients are coming from doctors referring to you?
Not necessarily, although we have had a couple. We're not in the position to make billings to insurance companies, if that's what you're asking. We, we don't do that. We have had some come where we would give them a receipt showing that they'd been there, and then they were turning them into their, their doctors and their insurance. But that's not really where we get them. We, we do a lot of extensive advertising. We do some internet advertising. We go through YP, who puts us out on all, all the major search engines. We do some, a little bit of newspaper stuff, we do some mailers. That's where most of them come from, and through referrals.
Just for the landlord point of view, I understand, like, we don't like to see vacancies in the township, but the use that this, to me, is overused for the 2,000 square feet that you have here. Can it be reduced to less use, more open area in, in your site plan?
I, I don't quite understand the question, please.
Your site plan, the one that you submitted, is just kind of overfilling the place with rooms, so even though, like, the fire department is going to come and check all of that, but I see it overfilling the facility that you're renting.
How many therapists do you plan on having at any given time? Maximum four or five, max. It's difficult to, if, if, even if we have four, it's difficult to run on too many less rooms. You always need an additional room for the incoming client. Okay? If all three or four of the ladies are working, when additional client comes in, we get them prepared for their massage, we, we actually need a massage room for them. So I suppose we could, but I'd prefer not to.
Thank you.
You know, if that becomes a requirement, we'll rework that, but I really prefer not to.
Mr. Nguyen, we've, we've approved this use in, in several locations recent, within the last eight, couple of years.
We've approved, this'll be the fourth one.
Fourth one, that's okay.
Yeah, this is, this, this one and the other one were relatively small. I think the two previous ones were like 4,000 or 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, the one at 25 and, and Van Dyke.
And then the one at crossroads at Shaner and Hall Road.
Right. And we've had no issues with any of this.
No, we haven't. This has been properly vetted, now the applicants passed all the tests, so...
Okay. Any other questions from the...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Dubell, you opened the other one in Sterling Heights in July, so this will be your second operating facility?
Yes, sir.
What are your hours of operation typically?
Okay, in Sterling, in Sterling, we're nine to nine because of the local statute. They have a nine o'clock statute for massage establishments, okay? We'd love, we'd rather run a 10 to 10 for, for a lot of reasons. The nine o'clock in the morning, truthfully, is kind of a waste of time. Now, we do cleaning, and we do other, other manual things in, in the store at that time. But other than that, that's, as far as with clients, it's generally a waste of time. We would much rather do, still the 12-hour day, but I'd much rather, if it's okay with the board, I'd rather do a 10 to 10.
And that's seven days a week?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not a massage expert, but you have a list of services here, and can you explain to me what, a four-handed massage?
Yeah.
Chinese cupping and table shower? What are those?
Absolutely, absolutely. Table shower is nothing more than a way of cleansing your body before your massage or helping cleanse your body after the massage to get rid of the oils. We also use hot towels to do so. That table shower is done properly. The gentleman or lady that taken back there is covered in the proper areas. We're not overexposing them, and they're basically helped to scrub, again, to prepare. Many of our clients come there after work, from Mills, from, from, we're right across the street from Chrysler. We have a lot of Chrysler employees that come there, and they're not in the cleanest condition when they come, so it's a way of helping prepare them. What were the other two, sir?
Chinese cupping and, yeah.
Sure, anybody see the Olympics?
I was going to say, you know, you didn't watch swimmers.
Have you watched the Olympics?
Michael Phelps with all the things on the back, yeah.
It's, it's real. I could, I could go through the, I could educate you on Chinese cupping, but I won't.
That's okay, I kind of get the idea.
Basically, what it is, it's a procedure done to draw blood to the area of an injury. You go in there with sore muscles, little tears in your tendons, that sort of thing. It does absolutely help speed up the healing.
Okay.
Bottom line.
Mr. Nguyen, the hours are pretty...
That'd be standard, and there's no adjacencies of residential. There are some apartments to the north, but there's a huge drain easement, so I don't think the hours of operation would be any problem at all, Mr. Turner. But it's an appropriate question to ask.
You asked me about forehand, too.
What's that?
You asked me about forehand massage.
Well, is that, okay, yeah.
Two massage techs, and they work as a team. They're so used to working together, they'll be working as a team. It's a, one on one side of the body, one on the other side of the body.
Forehand. Makes sense, okay.
Say, hey, I'm not a massage guy either, and I figured that one out.
All right. Sorry, Jerry, you're one ahead of me, so... All right, that answers my question, thank you.
All right, anyone else, any questions?
Mr. Howard, we have the regular 5, 5, and 5 on us per lease.
It's a, is it a five-year lease, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a five-year lease, correct. I don't believe he has an option.
All right, thank you.
I can't remember, but I don't believe he has an option.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if anyone has any questions, and we'll call you back up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is the only public hearing. The Planning Commission will hold on the special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the Record for Township Board Evaluation. We are recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is a legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience wish to comment on this request? Going once, going twice? Okay, bring it back to the board. Mr. Nguyen, your thoughts, your comments?
I have no objections, Mr. Chairman. This is so similar to what we've approved in the past.
Okay, very good. Anything else you want to add? Very, okay, good. No problem. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, disapproval, or request or table it to evaluate your information further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of special land use application number 16-34 SLU 10 to permit the establishment of a massage therapy business at 45917 Hayes Road, based on the following findings. The business will occupy a vacant tenant space in an existing shopping center. Adequate access is available to this site from Hayes Road and Lakeside Boulevard. The activities will be completely enclosed in the building. There is an approved site plan, and no additional site improvements are necessary to support the site. The proposed use is compatible with other businesses located in the shopping center. The proposed use will not adversely impact existing or surrounding development, and the hours of operation will be 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., seven days a week.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, supported by Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Dalu?
Yes.
Mrs. DeCicco?
Yes.
Mr. Bernardi?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, good luck. Okay, next item is Site Plan number 16-33, PUD number 4, Pasquale Ecavedi, Smith Farm Site Condomining, and this is a final review. Is the petitioner's representative here? So while he, while he gets his board, Mr. Nguyen, do you want to kind of tee this off?
Sure. And this is, this, this is the final step in a, in a two-step site condominium approval process. It's equivalent to final preliminary plat and final plat if this were a subdivision, and the purpose of the review is twofold. Number one, we want to make sure that what they presented originally is similar in design to what they're presenting now, and, and to verify that all the public agencies that have some stake in this process for public improvements have indeed signed off on the plans, and that is the case here. We, you see, there's the approval letters from MDEQ for the water and sewer. There's still a few township engineering issues that need to be resolved, but they're well along the way in that process that I would feel comfortable. There's a couple of site plan issues that didn't get corrected. We need to note that there's one street tree and two replacement trees per lot. There's a requirement that the master deed be approved by the township engineer. That's comment number two and seven. There are some setbacks that don't fully comply, they're just the notation, the lots are big enough, but those, that notation needs to be fixed, and we do want a separate construction road to 25 mile road for at least the major improvements. I think that's, could easily be accommodated, because the property owner still owns the rest of that, and that's really it. I mean, these are minor corrections.
Okay, thank you. Introduce yourself, please.
Tom Kellogg, Leiner Associates, 17001 18 Mile Road, Clinton Township. We're just here to answer any questions. On our, actually, on our soil erosion plan, we do show construction access coming out of 25, so we can add that to the site plan and take care of the other notes.
Okay, then you have no issues with any of the other things that were raised by engineering or by the planning department?
I shared my comments with Mr. Kellogg today again, so everybody knew what was going on, and I think there's some elevations, I think you asked for...
These are by, oh, Sam Martin, sorry, and they're probably typical, they're about 30, 30 there.
Okay, are there any questions for the petitioner? Back to Mike.
Yeah, I was curious to the price point that these units...
I was going to say, you know, probably upwards of 7, 750 maybe.
Mr. Wozniak?
Mr. Kellogg?
Yes.
That easement with the Sunoco pipeline?
Yes.
That's all cleared up?
It's been signed by the owner, by Sunoco, and it's at the road commission for their signing, or Department of Road, sorry.
They've got no problem with the concrete over the easement?
No, that was part of this agreement. It's up, it's like a three-page amendment to the, to the existing easement. It defines the width, it defines the location, and then it handles all those issues like future problems, or, you know, if they have to do repairs or whatever.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Oppone.
Make the motion to approve the final condominium plans for Smith Farms Condominiums, number 16-33, subject to the submission of the revised plans addressing all Department comments.
Support.
Moved by Oppone, supported by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Dallo?
Yes.
Mr. or Mrs. DeSico, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Bernardi?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Planning Director's report.
Just two items, we just gave you our standard administrative approval report. We had 23 signs last month, which is kind of high. They come and go in waves, and this was a particularly busy month, and two temporary use requests, too. Next meeting's the 24th. We don't have anything in yet, so it'll be canceled.